I'd like to call it for the Bucksport Town Council meeting, 7:00 PM, Thursday, January 10, 2019. And I'd like to move directly to item number three, swearing in with the new councilors. So David Keen, Paul Bissonnet, and Dan Ormski come forward.
I notice I purposely got two pretty good sized boys to protect me.
Okay, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I.
Paul Bissonnet.
Dan Ormski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And obey the laws of the United States.
And of the State of Maine.
And of the State of Maine.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
For the town of Bucksport.
For the town of Bucksport.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
A town council member.
A town council member.
For the town of Bucksport.
For the town of Bucksport.
I'm going to open the floor to.
You'll do roll call first.
Oh, excuse me, thank you. Mr. Roll Call. Mark Eastman.
Here.
Paul Bissonnet.
Here.
David Keen.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Dan Ormski.
Here.
Robert Conriff.
Here.
Okay, now let's move right to item three, the election of mayor. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Peter Stewart, second.
Do you have any other nominations?
I'd nominate myself as for mayor.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any other nominations? Do you have any motion to close?
Motion to close, second.
Okay, and the first item is we have a motion to nominate Peter Stewart as mayor. All those in favor? All opposed?
I'm against.
And the second, you want to continue with that? All those in favor for Mark or with draw?
I'm with draw.
Okay. Peter Stewart.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Before we move into the rest of the agenda, for those of you who are not aware, Councilor David Keen resigned from the town council yesterday and has provided his resignation letter to the town, to the town manager and town council members. I am writing to provide you with my formal notice of immediate resignation from the town of Bucksport Town Council. This was not an easy decision to make, and I appreciate the opportunity to have served the town of Bucksport citizens for the past 23 years. Thank you, David Keen, Mayor, Town of Bucksport.
Before we go any further, so I just want to publicly acknowledge the job that David has done, understanding his reasons why he did it, but publicly from the council, I want to make sure that we acknowledge the great job he's done. I hope he comes back, so I, you know, like.
We, this, this, this letter came in yesterday, and there's been very little time to arrange, but as I discussed with him, there will be a time where the people of this community will have the opportunity to thank him for his service, and we will be arranging a time for that to happen in a way that appropriately honors all the work that David has done here for this community for many years. And he has assured me that he's not disappearing and that he will be a resource if necessary, and wish him the very best in his retirement from this, his long service. As a result of this, the council has, according to the charter, since it's more than 60 days to the next regular election, which is November of 2019, the council needs to appoint a person to fill in this until the next regular election, which coincides with the end of what would have been Mayor Keen's term. And past practice has been that councilors have appointed a retired counselor, a counselor who has served before, and has always appointed someone that would not then run at the next election. And the reason for that is, is the appointment by the council creates an advantage for someone that would then run for council from that seat that no other candidate would have. And so by appointing a former counselor who has no intention to run again, you get two things. One is some experience to help with the job, and the second is that you don't create an advantage for someone in a position to run that other candidates who might be interested would not have. I've taken the liberty of speaking to, checking with both Paul Godwin and Paul Rabs, and both have indicated that if the council wished, that either would serve the balance of this year until the next election. But I say that, the council is free to appoint anyone it chooses into this position for this time period, but your past practice has been to make that prior council members.
I would just point out, historically, that Margaret Chase Smith swore that she wouldn't run for election if she were appointed to fill her husband's position, so I just put that out as a historical perspective of anybody thinking about it.
Any discussion?
I, you know, I think with the budget season upon us, literally, and the learning curve that it takes to deal with all that stuff, I think it would be helpful to have somebody that's been through it a few times to go through it at this, at this point in time. So I would be in favor of either, either one. I don't have a preference, but I think it would be advantageous to the council to have that expertise as part of the, part of the team.
Dan?
I must think that it wouldn't be, we had, we had six people run for council, and it was a close race all the way through, so it should be something that we consider, that we had other people run for council, so we should consider those people too, or at least the last one, it should be Jim.
Anybody else? Steven?
My only, I thought about it just a little bit today, and the only consideration that I've had is certainly my first thought was what Dan was thinking, but as I've thought about it with two new members and a new mayor, it certainly would be wise to consider bringing somebody onto the council that A does have previous experience as well as somebody who isn't planning on running again in November for the obvious reason.
I would agree, you know, going into budget season is going to be tough if we don't bring somebody in that has familiarity.
And, and I would agree also, and I would, I would lean, and I'll throw it out, I'll be the person throwing, I lean towards Paul Godwin for the fact that having no ties to any town associations, you know, we've, we've had discussions on the past of people being associated with fire departments and, and boarding on those budgets and things like that, I think it's just a cleaner all the way around. I know for a fact Paul's not going to run again, that's, he's, he's expressed that.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion, Mr. Stewart?
I'm throwing that out there as a form of a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? I assume you will notify Mr. Godwin, make sure he hasn't changed his mind in the meantime? All right, and he will start hopefully the meeting of the 24th?
Yeah.
Committee assignments, we've changed the committee's assignments started last year under the town code Appendix B, Section 41, Council Rules, list the five committees that we assign council members to. What I'd like to do, and we've done in the past, is take some time to look at that. Usually everybody has two committees, that's kind of how it works out. Everybody can decide the couple committees they want to be on and send myself and Sue an email, and we'll make those assignments and announce them at the next, at the next council meeting, if that's.
The new guys get three.
The new guys do get three, I wasn't going to tell them that, you know. So if we can get those, and that way we can make those announcements at the next meeting. Item four, presentation of any town council recognitions. Don't believe we have any. Item five, consider minutes of previous, minutes of previous meetings. The only ones that we have are the item B, Regulatory Review Committee Minutes from 12, 13, 18.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to second. Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item six, receive and review correspondence and documents. A is Down East Transportation Monthly Ridership Report, November 2018. I believe that's the report we receive every month from those folks, and it looks like they're still doing a bang up job up there with that. Item seven, ordinances to consider or introduce. I don't believe we have any of those. I think we'll have something for the next meeting, won't we?
Appendix K will be ready for its first reading at the next meeting.
And for, for the new members, that's on the website, I believe, under the planning board, if they've had some meetings on that, so if you want to take a pre-look at that, you can. Item eight, discussion items. A is Wilson Hall.
In the packet that was published, I included some research done by resident Jim Morrison that, that went through what the town had done in regard to Wilson Hall, and also a proposal by Councilor Eastman, and, what was the other thing? Another one. And then a discussion by Don Houghton of a, a proposal that was also published in The Enterprise that talked about a way to look at Wilson Hall. And then today, I received another proposal from Larry Wall, which I've had copies over here and distributed to the council. The purpose of tonight is for the council to discuss and give me direction on what type of, of a resolve you want prepared for the next meeting, whether that's a resolve that is to tear the building down, to proceed with proposal A, or B, or C, or some hybrid of the three, so that the final decision on what you do would be a vote at either the last meeting of January or the first meeting of February, whichever the council decided. So that's, that's what's in your packet, that's what we have for information. All of these were out there before, except Mr. Walls, and he's here if anyone has questions about.
Any comments, Ray? Mark, you want to talk?
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the main focus of this was just to try to take another look at Wilson Hall and see if there's ways, you know, first to assess it and, or reassess it. We, I reached out to Maine Preservation, and gentleman Chris Kloss was willing to serve on a committee, he has a house up here in Penobscot, and I think he could lend some good advice to things maybe we've overlooked. The first thing would be to assess it, figure out if it's anything worth saving, and the second would be to move on to the other things, but the assessment would be first. Any questions?
You got a timeline in there, I noticed.
Yep.
Is that sort of what you're looking at, is come September?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to depend a little bit, you know, grant funding, if, if that is the avenue that we went down, I mean, it does take some time to work through that process, but that, this would give us some time to, that it could be reassessed at that point, Peter.
Mayor, do you have a proposal I saw, do you want to talk about that?
If you've all read it, I'll take any questions if you have. Is there a timeline, Larry, that, an expiration date, if you will, from your proposal? In other words, if we took some time with a group to, you know, explore options, which could include your proposal, presumably, is there a timeline that you're looking for to get an answer on this that, you know, would go away if it didn't happen, say, in the next meeting or something like that?
I would like an answer by the next meeting.
Okay, we want a decision as soon as possible.
So I can get started in March.
And you've got a contractor firm? Who's that? Can you say?
I'd rather not right now.
Okay.
So the way I understand it is, the way I understand it is you would be the owner of the property, and, and as soon as we sell you the property, you're fit to do what you offer a dollar. Is that what you're asking us for?
Well, I mean, there's still the, the loan, too, that would be part of that.
What's that?
The, the loan.
The forgivable loan?
Yeah, and I think we need to talk about a term to that loan, you know, just, I mean, what we don't want to do is we'd sell it to you for a dollar and give you 65,000, and I don't think you're going to do this, but then you sell it six months down the road, which I don't see happening, but.
It was like a five-year term, I'm consistent with.
So what, jet poverty?
Except that was a much bigger one.
Well, yeah.
But, that, that a term and some sort of timeline, there's very specific items here presented that are going to be done, and, and I think that, that the timeline of a year, or whatever, that, that if this is to stabilize and do this, that it would need to happen in a relatively short timeframe, as opposed to.
I, I, excuse me, I, I plan on having it done within a year.
Entirely done or just secured?
With what I've got on that.
Okay. What about the rest of it, Larry? I mean, as far as, is your plan to make it into apartments?
Yes.
And is that something you're going to move forward with in that same year, or working towards in that year?
If, if my funds allow, I would move forward. If not, it would probably sit, possibly maybe a developer would come along and be interested in finishing it.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And you say you are going to put the bell tower back on, or is this going to depend?
Again, that, that will depend on funds.
Sure, okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to do that.
Right, okay. So there's no lender involved?
No.
That makes it easier.
Except for the, except for the town.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, I, I mean, one of the things that I've, I've gone round and round, like I'm sure everybody has on this whole thing, you know, we can't, one of the conclusions I've come to is I can't do anything about what the councils in the past have done or not done, so I mean, we've heard that discussion a lot, and I don't think that's a reason not to do certain things, I mean, we just, that's, that wasn't part of our council necessarily. The town's in transition, we're, we're going to have some new things, but I think part of what was mentioned last time, and I think I'm beginning to come around to and feel really strongly about, is that there's got to be some connection, or we, we need to maintain connection to the past as well, and some of the things that make Bucksport unique. And, you know, I think, the town hasn't spent much money, and thanks to Jim, did a good job on the research, it was very helpful. What I gleaned from that and some discussions, we really haven't spent much money on that, unless, unless I miss something. There hasn't been much money spent, maybe a little bit of attorney fees over time. We've appro, we've, we've authorized the expenditure of things, but we haven't really spent much money on it. So I'm, I'm inclined to go in some direction where we, we keep the building, at least in the short term, to really put a focused effort into some plan, whether it's to sell it, or to, you know, work in a, in a committee in a focused manner with a timeframe to see what we can do with it. That's, that's where I am on it right now, so.
Well, I think there are probably a lot of people out here in the audience, not everybody has a copy of this proposal, I gather, that they should have time to pick that up maybe at the town office, and I don't think we're going to make a decision tonight necessarily, and, but you can pick it up at the town office, probably starting in the next couple of days to take a look at it.
Larry, in your proposal, would there be any room for a park there? You know, it's been tossed around a little bit on the front of it?
I haven't given any thought, possibly.
Because then, you know, for the investment, there could be public benefit taken from that.
Well, I know other people think the council moves at glacier speed, but sometimes that's better than moving into something we regret, you know, five or 10 years or less down the road.
Anybody else?
Sure. I certainly have spoken several times about my opinion on Wilson Hall, but I think I, as much as I've talked about the fact that there hasn't been much of a plan in terms of, for the better part of 40 years, what's going to happen with that building, I think whether looking at Councilor Eastman's proposal, I think probably the only question I would ask there is, at the end of that timeline, would there be a way to repurpose that building or even the materials in that building if need be, because I think that would be an important thing to do. But then, after it happened, the chance today to look at Mr. Wall's proposal, it seems to me, isn't this kind of what this council has been looking for, for some time now? This is a, somebody in the community who has been in the community for a while, certainly as someone who has run a successful business in this community, has shown a demonstrated interest in this building, and I don't think anybody here can question whether or not he would like to see that building not only stand, but be a productive part of Bucksport. It seems to me that this is, this is the proposal that this council, at least in my observance of it up to this point, has been waiting for.
Well, we certainly put it out to the general public, both in publication and what have you, so it's not like we're jumping into something here that hasn't been made available to the citizens of Bucksport and anybody else that might be interested in, in the property. I think the council probably agrees with that.
Do you have a term in mind, do you have something in mind if we were to go this direction of how to word it, so?
If you were, you mean if you were to accept this proposal, you'd direct me to prepare an agreement with Mr. Wall that develops a timeframe for completion, a, a window for the, the forgivable loan, and how that would work, and other considerations for your review and consideration at whatever council meeting you've determined.
And one of my concerns is our code enforcement officers said the building should be condemned.
Yeah.
You know, to what end is that going to cause a stink in what you're trying to do? You know, I don't, if it belongs in private hands, I don't see it sitting around for a year with nothing being done to it.
Well, that's not what Larry's saying.
He says it's going to be done within a year.
Done, just securing the roof, stabilizing the structure itself.
Does that satisfy what the code enforcement officer is looking for? I don't really have that answer.
Like I said, question two, didn't the other proposals come in that said it's going to be near 450,000 to get it stabilized? The plan is to get it stabilized with 63,000 or 65,000?
I, I don't believe that the total cost of doing this work is $65,000. I think what Mr. Wall has asked for is a forgivable loan in the amount that the, he estimates the town would have spent on either demolishing, cleaning up the site, and doing some improvements there as a, but, that it doesn't contain his total budget for what this, because this is more than what we were talking about. This is all new windows, all new floors, the repair of the foundation. Those were not items that were part of the last. The last was covering the roof and securing, removing the piece that we already.
Well, I guess that was my question, is the, the piece that you have at the top, is that a project that's going to start right off, replace the windows and doing that, that $400,000 project, you know, is what, is what it's been told to us?
I, I plan on getting started in March, and hopefully would be done in, you know, during the summer, and I figure much less than $450,000 for this.
And then, and this, it sounds like would, a construction engineer by any stretch, it sounds to me like this would stabilize it, and by, I mean, it's a, it's a solid building, it would stabilize it so that should you need to wait to get additional funding, or we're waiting for additional assistance or something like that, that it's not going to continue to deteriorate like it has.
That, that's my concern, is that the CEO has been in there, said the building could be condemned.
This, this would take care of all of his concerns.
I guess that's, that's, that's my answer I was looking for, you know, that's what I was wondering. And that's certainly going to cost more than the 65,000.
Absolutely.
And you did say, Larry, you'd take down the tower if you can't deal with it right now and just wait on it, is that?
I would take it down. I would either leave it and work on it in place, if that's possible. If not, tear it down, maybe tear it down in place.
And just roof it over, just to get?
Roof it over temporarily.
Yeah.
And then, once we get up to that point, decide how to proceed with that, if the funds allowed, you know, continue redo the bell tower.
Are you going to keep the dormer on it? Where'd you take that?
Keep the dormer, yeah.
Yeah.
That needs some work also.
Yeah, yeah, it was under built, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Thanks. Anybody from the audience have any comments, other plans?
The proposed cost of the demolition of the building was 39,000 and something. It wasn't anywhere near 45,000, and that included cleaning up the site, along with removing the debris after it was dropped. It wasn't just put it into the hole, recover it, it was clean it up, gone. So that's a matter of public record, you can find that, because I found it, I had it somewhere, that's, that all the proposals that were there, and this, this particular one includes. included all the cleanup. This, that's going on, this proposal that you had in front of you, we've seen that same thing twice.
I don't think we have.
I'm a little skeptical about having the first proposal. It's gonna be $400,000, and I understand he wants to do that.
I don't think, I don't think that we're talking about the same thing. I've not seen that proposal for $400,000.
Well, but I think what Larry's saying, and what you were saying, is that this initial money right here, plus whatever he puts into it that isn't stated here, isn't going to finish it, finish it. It's to get it to, again, to that point where it can sit without any worry that it's gonna fall apart. And so, I, you know, whether it's, you're gonna put in another 50, whatever, you know, you've got man-hours, you've got costs and so forth, but it's not gonna be $400,000, but it's gonna be more than enough to keep it stable, is what I'm hearing.
Right, preserve it, yeah.
That's what I'm hearing. And the other thing on your figures, the $20,000 you have is not to clean up the site, it's to improve the site.
Yes.
So, you've got $43,000, you've got $45,000, Jim mentioned $39,000, you know, yours is a little above whatever that figure was, but the $20,000 isn't to clean the site, it's to improve.
To improve, because there was talk of a park. You know, with a park, you'd probably have pavers, putting down pavers is quite expensive.
Now, that other figure that we had talked about, or that was given to us, $39,000, didn't include improving the site, which is what he's got down there, which adds up to the 65, makes it $65,000. You've got four figures here, right? Is that accurate?
At $39,000, I'm not sure where that came from, but my 43 is, I think it was $32,900 that that gentleman came in with, and then, if it wasn't accepted right away, it would be an additional 10, so that's where that came, rounded up.
Anybody else in the public? Just one up.
I understand this proposal, it'll be an interest-free loan, it's forgiven at the end. Am I understanding that right?
That's what I'm, I get that question, ask how, what it looks like. That's why I asked the question of how it would be.
I'm just a little curious why we charged the school interest and collected our money back and went on here.
How similar is this to what we did with the Jet Prowdy?
Very.
I'm sorry?
Very.
Very, yeah, yeah.
Is the difference just the size of the forgivable loan, or is there anything else that's major that would be?
The term.
The term, the term and the size. But the difference between here and the RSU is there are four districts that use that school. The town of Bucksport no longer owns that school. So, if the town of Bucksport withdrew from RSU 25, the schools would reside in Bucksport, but we don't own them. So, that's what's key in this. This is to help rehab a building that the town owns, we're looking to get rid of. It's what we've asked, we've asked for developers, we bring developers. The council needs to come up with, what does the council want to do? Does the council wanna work with the developer? Does the council want to be a developer themselves, or does the council want to remove the building? Thank you.
So, somebody else can add?
Mike Gomesby, resident. There's a lot of people in town that wanna save the building, and that's understandable. It does have a really good history. There's a lot of other people in town that would love to save the building, but don't really wanna see the town's taxpayer money go anymore into the building. I've come up with something that, I've looked at Mr. Eastman's proposals, they have pretty much been done in the past. I have a little bit of experience with that. I was on nine years on the council, and the whole time I was on the council, we had this problem coming up and down. We went through a lot of this stuff. I think that they should consider putting the building out, advertising it for bid. Give yourself two or three months, or whatever it takes, so get groups so they can have time to prepare. Auction it off to the highest bidder. A dollar gets it. If that's all you get, a dollar gets it. With stipulations. Number one, it will either be safely secured for future renovations, and that could mean like a rubber roof, or whatever we've talked about in the past, or completely renovated, or torn down. The bidder can do all, any of the three. The town would invest no more taxpayer money, and will then have the property back on the tax rolls. Now, I don't suggest putting, it's not worth a lot, so it's probably worth the land. If there are no bidders after this period, the town tears it down itself, spends the 32, I thought it was $32,000 was the last bid, but I guess it's 30.
It went up 10.
Went up 10, okay. If there are no bidders, the town tears it down. The preservation groups are encouraged to bid and follow the rules. This is their chance. It will not be the town's fault if nobody bids and the building has to go. This has gone on long enough, really. This leaves the ultimate responsibility, whether the building stays or goes, to the public at large, mainly the preservation groups. This gives them the opportunity to come up with something and actually do something. And it takes the town out of that responsibility of paying for everything every few months, who needs this, or, you know, or being liable even. So, that's just something I've put out there for you. So, that would keep the taxpayers who, most of them probably would love to see the building preserved, but they just don't wanna see town taxpayer money go for it over and over. And this has been going on a long, long time. I think, and I looked at Jim's research, and I thought he did a hell of a job. It's hard going back over all those whole council meetings. And 1998, I think, was the first mention on there, and I know a lot of it didn't happen early on, but in the 2000s, it all started. And we've tried to sell the building, we tried to give it away, we tried everything, and it all comes down to the same thing. In the end, it just doesn't work.
Well, that's what I was thinking, Mike. What part of what you're talking about has not been done in the past?
On this?
Yeah.
This is, it goes to somebody for that cheap, a dollar. And those are the only three stipulations, and if nobody bids on it, it gets torn down. It's a decision, right here and now. And the public, and the preservation groups, and everybody's responsible. No, it doesn't put all of it on you that you tore the building down. It puts it out there so everybody's responsible. So, if they want it to stay, they'll come up with something. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
The motion that we're looking for tonight would be, as you said, would be a motion to...
Thank you.
For a resolve, motion for a resolve, to do one of those three.
Something.
One of the things, I forgot to thank Don Hogan, as well as Mark and Jim, for those research and proposals that they did. I mean, people took a lot of time, a lot of thought to put that in there, and it was really helpful. We'll go back to, we keep hearing all the money that the town has spent on this, and we haven't. Unless you can prove it to me and show me all the money, we've spent a lot of time and energy, as Mike mentioned and others have mentioned, but we have not spent a lot of money in this town on it, right?
There've been a number of approvals, many of which didn't get expended. You approved an expenditure of $30,000 on the building in 2017, and you expended the $4,400 that it took to take the unsafe piece off the top, but you did not spend the remainder of that appropriation.
I just wanna be clear that, you know, we haven't spent a lot of taxpayers' money, so for that narrative to be out there isn't accurate in the discussion.
And as far as marketing it, we've primarily done RFPs, right? Just request for proposals. I mean, there's other means to market a property.
And if you're ready for motion, I have a motion.
Back there, there's another member of the public that wants to...
Somebody else want to talk? Somebody else have something else?
There's no mention in there about how much money was paid to the lawyer who was on retention on this thing for quite an extended period of time. There's no mention of that. There's no mention of how much money it cost for the town, who's out there doing the cleanup, and the different work that Dave done on there, removing the box in the front. There's a lot of money that was expended that hasn't even, I couldn't even find it in any of the things that I read.
But again, when we say a lot of money, or a lot of taxpayers' money, that's not an answer. That's not data. That doesn't, anybody can say we've spent a lot of money, but if the attorney was only paid $2,000 over that time period, that's not a lot of money. I mean, that's what I'm getting at, is if we're gonna keep saying that, then it's sending the wrong message without the data to back it up. And that's my problem with saying we've spent a lot of money, a lot of taxpayers' money.
I spent a month trying to find that data.
Pardon me?
I spent a month trying to find that data.
And you did a great job, Jim. I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying that when we keep throwing that out there, that we spent a lot of money, it skews the conversation. You know, it's almost biasing the conversation to, well, taxpayers are wasting all this money on Wilson Hall, and that's not fair to, you know, to try to make a judgment on that part of it. I get that we've spent a lot of misery, a lot of discussion, and all that stuff, but, you know.
I know Dave Mylan spent...
Mike, you wanna come up so that the rest of the world out there can hear you?
I'm sorry, Mike.
I know Dave Mylan spent hundreds of hours working on different sales programs to sell this building. Now, he's paid by the town. That's the kind of money that you're spending.
Soft work here.
Well, it's money. It's all money.
No, I understand. It's a soft work.
He could be doing something else. Nobody's saying, I'm not saying that $20,000's a lot of money, or $10,000's a lot of money. I'm saying, I think the taxpayers don't wanna spend any money. That's my point.
That's fair. Anybody else? Chris?
Thank you. My name is Chris Johnson. I live in North Bucksport. I just wanted to reinforce some of the information that you talked about tonight. I was there at the very first meeting, the very first planning meeting at the Jewett School. There were 26 of us there. I just wanted, Larry is terrific. I'm optimistic for Larry, but at the same time, Larry's presentation, to quote Jim, was the second time at least we've gone through this. At that meeting at the Jewett School many years ago, when this was all starting, we were trying to understand what had happened before. We had a gentleman in the group, a banker, who said, "I have a person who's really interested in this project." The meeting basically ended at that point. Now, Jim said, "Where are these people? Where are these people that have come before?" And Jim, we sort of melted away because we had been told that we were to wait to hear from this developer. And the next thing we know is that our local representative is involved in this process. I started getting phone calls from people saying, "What's going on?" But I do know that there was $4,000 or $5,000 raised, and I believe that money was being spent as of recently as last year. That was not taxpayers' money. That was money that was donated. If I'm mistaken on that, Madam Manager, please let me know. But I do wanna put that into perspective. There have been projects, there have been folks that have wanted to get involved in the past, and it just hasn't worked. I'm optimistic and rooting for Larry, but I do wanna make sure that everybody understands the group melted away because of council interference and developer interference, and the optimism, but it was all secret. Everything had to be secret. We couldn't. We saw it again tonight. Larry can't tell you, and that's fine. There's always this secrecy. We can't tell you who's on the line. We don't wanna have that discussion right now. You'll find out eventually. The group eventually said, "We're done. We're done with this." So, you've heard me talk about transparency here in the past with a lot of other issues, and I'm hoping that no matter what happens, especially with Larry, that this becomes as transparent as possible. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Violet Grindel. I'm the resident. I think it should be saved. It's a piece of history. It's in our town. The ESU has a lot of faults. It needs a lot of work. But I think it would be a great opportunity. You could renovate it and open it as it was back in its heyday. It would be a great bringing in of tourists, potential education for children who live in this town, who could see what it was back in the day, and instead of reading from it in a textbook, you can actually go and see it. I think that's a golden opportunity. I think they kinda missed out on that in the Waterworks Building in Bangor. And I just think there's still life in that building. They just need some TLC. And it could be rented out for weddings. It could be rented out for anything. It could be a haunted house and Halloween. I mean, I know they do it over at the fort, but it's not so children-friendly. It could do, the potential is endless. But I think, once it's torn down, that's it, and there's no going back. So, that's just what I have to say.
So, where are we at?
I'll make a motion. I'd make a motion that we create a resolve, whatever the language is, to accept Larry Wall's proposal, leave it to the town manager to work out any details that need to be worked out in terms of the language, the purchase and sale, or any of that stuff.
That's a motion. Second.
What if we amend it to, you know, reflect, there was a lot of desire in the community for a park. I mean, I did speak with Knoxville's owner, and he was receptive to a park. That way, there is public benefit for public money being spent.
As part of that project?
As part of that. If Larry was agreeable, as part of that project.
I think we have to be careful, because now it's in private hands. I don't know if we can dictate what a private citizen's gonna do with their land.
No, no, we can, as part of the sale, Peter, we can dictate this park's gonna be a park through an easement, or fee simple, either way. It could occur.
I wouldn't object to, I mean, if that's not going to impact, we can come to our agreement on a proposal with that. I wouldn't object to having that as part of my motion.
So, should I second that with an amendment? Does that work, too?
Can that be worked out in the language, or?
Bobby, you have a motion to second, right?
You have a motion to second, and if, does the second or accept the amendment, and number one, does that, what does that do to the proposal before we go further on that?
The one thing that comes to mind is the liability, my liability.
I think...
A little over an acre. So, we have a motion to accept the proposal from Larry Wall.
I guess, it sounds to me, just keep the motion straight for now. I don't know how...
Because we can dance all around all night long and add little amendments to it and everything else. I think we're defeating our purpose on what we're trying to do. You know, if the town wants to get rid of this, I don't think the town needs to own a piece of it just to keep an easement. That's...
Not an easement. There's been discussion of a park.
We have all kinds of stuff around here where we can't fill now for green space and box and waterfronts and everything else. And if the gentleman has a proposal, we accept it. Let him try to develop.
The liability issue ends up becoming, I can understand the concern about that, and how do we deal, do we...
We got a motion, and we have a second on the motion to accept the proposal.
Well, we're not ready. The discussion hasn't stopped yet.
Well, that's what I'm just saying.
Yeah, we have a motion. We're talking about the amendment, right?
Well, we gotta deal with this motion we have first.
Okay, alright.
So, if we wanna change it, vote this down and go forward. So, anything else from the council? Anything further from the public on this?
Under this proposal, will this property go on the tax rolls?
Yes.
From this point on?
From the date that the council transfers it, yes.
From the sale.
From the sale.
And we're gonna base the valuation on there for that?
It already has a value.
Anything else?
Judith Gillis, I don't know if you have to introduce yourself in this town.
You do.
You do. Yes, you could go with the idea of Mike, except I haven't been here that long, or the last two years, but Larry Wall already has a proven track record over and over and over again. Sorry, I just keep seeing it. Sorry, I just keep seeing it. So, to me, that's something more concrete than putting it out and you people still having to deal with it. You could have it done because he would take care of it, and he would be doing it right.
Anything else from the public?
I'm Chris White, and I am the president of Bucksport. And I think this proposal from Larry is phenomenal. I think it's the right way to do things. Gets the piece of property off your hands, puts the responsibility in Larry's hands. And I think trying to amend his proposal just complicates things. I think you're going to get some tax money out of it. Who knows how much, but you're going to get some. You're going to get some income out of it because you're doing a loan. So, as far as I'm concerned, I think this is probably the simplest and the best way to go. And that's all I got to say.
Anybody else? Yes.
I just have a couple of questions. I mean, I want to speak. Now, his proposal is, he pays you a dollar, right? And then you give him $65,000, right? It's forgivable, so he doesn't have to pay it back. So, you're basically giving somebody $65,000 to take something you already own. I don't, I don't understand that at all. I just don't get it. Why would, it makes no sense to me.
And part of the reason is, is that we were going to spend that money anyway to do something with it, and what were we going to get out of it? So.
It just doesn't make any sense. Why just don't put it out to bid and let someone, you know, even if it's $50 or $100, you're not, you're not spending the $65,000 no matter what. They are. It's going to be their liability, and they're, you know, they have to take care of it. $65,000 is...
But then if nobody bids on it, we're spending $45,000 to tear it down.
No.
That's what, that's what, that's what the one...
Tell me someone's not going to bid a dollar on that building, really? You know, I mean, the chances are that no one's going to...
But the chances are.
Chances are that no one's not going to pass that out for a dollar. I just don't understand.
We have, there is precedent. We have done that with the Jet Proudy sizable loan, forgiven loan, right? $200,000.
That's...
That's an ongoing...
I know that. I understand that.
In this case, we're talking about $65,000 above what it would have cost to tear it down. But it's going to be an ongoing taxable entity for the town. It could be 50 years, 60 years, 70 years.
And it preserves it.
And it preserves it. So, we're getting taxable income into the town.
But he has the right to tear it down. That's what that $43,000 is for, correct?
No.
Okay. Alright. Well, anyway, I just don't, it doesn't make any sense to me that we're giving someone $65,000 to take a building.
Part of the agreement for this, for the, give it a loan, is that this $65,000 isn't just, we write a check on the day of the closing and call it good. As his, these repairs are done, there's, the money will be disseminated so that there's an attachment to that, the cost of what he's doing.
Not unlike a construction loan.
Not unlike a construction loan in that it wouldn't just be, we close, write a $65,000 check, and then wait to see what happens. That there would have to be progress and goals in order to get the money that's considered to be part of this thing. That was another thing to ensure that the repairs that have been slated are done in a timely way and that the town hasn't, hasn't put out money before that happens.
And what happens if they're not done in a timely way? We end up with the building again? Just...
Well, the agreement on what happens if is all part of the language, I think, is that if this motion goes forward, that needs to be contained in this agreement, that if then.
Alright. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else? Sorry. Never be sorry.
I like Larry an awful lot, okay? But when I was on the council and when I got off the council, there was a building in town that we sold. And the stipulation at the time that I was on the council was it had to be torn down, okay? That's all I know about it because I got off the council. The building was sold to Larry for a very low amount of money. It's on Federal Street. And I haven't seen anything happen to it. It never got torn down. It never got renovated. And I, it's my understanding it's used for storage. I'd just like to hear from Larry what his plans are for that building before he buys this next one, if you would. And I'm not putting, I am putting you on the spot. I'm sorry.
Okay. My plan for Federal Street, which by the way is also, was also a building that belonged to the Main Conference Seminary. Because of its historical significance, I wanted to rehab that. I had a bunch of contractors set up last year to start that process. And the more I looked at the building, the more I thought about it, I decided to tear it down. So, hopefully, that's going to happen this year as well. Now, the, when I bought that property, Mike's right, it was advertised for sale, but it had to be torn down. Nobody came, came along and put in an offer on it. And I didn't want it torn down at the time. I wanted to investigate rehabbing it. So, I submitted an offer to buy the building for, you know, considerably low price, but I wanted to have it remain standing so I could investigate rehab. And like I say, I've since decided that it's not worth it. There's nothing left of it. It's been chopped up too much. So, that's part of the plan, is to take it down this year.
Anybody else?
Judith Gillis, Bucksport. Wilson Hall is on the National Register of Historic Places. That's not an honor you give it. It's not an honor that the state gives it. It's a federal honor. It means that that house, that building, has historic significance for our country. And some of you probably heard that I've been doing PowerPoints around show, around town to explain why historically it is so important. Now, it's on the main preservation endangered list. Now, that is a state significance. But if it's on the National Historic Register and the country is saying it's important, and it is, and not that you people have shown up, it's worth saving. So, that...
Well, thank you.
Okay.
We don't even talk that like that, okay? Thank you. Anybody else? Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. What meeting do you want this resolved at?
The 24th if possible.
The 24th?
Would the resolve be laying out all the terms?
The resolve will identify all of the terms that... No.
Are you here on the 13th?
Are you here on the 13th?
I'll be here for the first meeting February.
It's the 13th.
Okay.
13th? No, the resolve will spell out all the terms of the agreement.
Okay.
So, you can decide if that's the way you want it.
We leave it in your capable hands, so I can sure you dress it up.
Discussion items. B, goals and objectives, meeting date.
Just to clarify, you said you're going to vote on the 13th of February?
Yes. We annually have a meeting set aside to set goals and objectives for the coming year. And we try to do that, the budget is due to you by March 12th. And this goals and objective session happens before that so that we can incorporate into our budget the things that you say that have a cost associated with them that we need to do. We did it on an off Thursday.
I was going to say, was it an off Thursday? It wasn't, so that...
Last time.
The 21st of February?
The 21st. Does the 21st of February work for?
I think so. Yep.
Everybody?
It is. Does that work for everybody?
February 21st, if we, if we do it, would, could everyone do a six o'clock? So that we're, if we did like 6:30 to 6:00?
Yep.
It wouldn't be, you can go through that.
Perfect.
And if there's any particular topics that you want information for prior to that meeting to be part of the discussion, please let me know so I have time to prepare those before the 21st.
For everybody and for the new folks, can you send out what last year's looked like so we can all sort of have an idea?
Yes, my end of the year report was covered what had been done last year. But we will do that. And that, we have that here, and it's just a special council meeting, but it's a work session. It's obviously open to the public, anyone who wants to come in.
Listen. Alright. Item C, town report dedication 2018.
Our fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2018, the town report is complete. The audit's done. Everything's finished. We need a dedication. I have a suggestion.
Okay.
Based on current events, I, we have, actually, I'd like you to do both 18 and 19 tonight because I think that we have two very deserving entities, persons, that would be. And the first would be, either for 18, 19, would be David Keen. Dedication for David for 23-plus years of service on the council. For the 18, the 18, and then the 2019 report is through June 30th of 2019. And we have another sad event coming up on the agenda, which is the resignation of our town clerk.
No, we're not going to accept that.
And I think that Kathy would be a great candidate for the 2019 report. Those are my suggestions for dedications.
Anybody? So, I have a motion? Second? Any discussion, any discussion from the public? Any more from the council? So, you go 18 with David Keen and 19, so you still have to do a report. You can't go out and do a report. All those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations. Thank you. Item nine, agenda items. A, to adopt resolve 2019-32 to set the interest rate for delinquent sewer bills for 2018.
The maximum is 8% allowed. Since 2015, the town has charged 4% for delinquent bills. Half the rate, and my recommendation is that the town continue that 4% rate and not increase it for delinquent sewer bills.
Second? A motion and a second. Anything further from the public, from the council? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, to adopt resolve 2019-33 to use reserve funds to repair ambulance one in the amount of $5,632.50.
Assistant Chief Benning is here. The, there was an accident with the ambulance in October of 2008, which involved damage to the side of the ambulance. That part of the damage not covered by insurance is included in this number. And the rest of the number is corrosion repair, corrosion prevention.
Michael, watch what's up.
And that, and it's a combination of those two numbers that created this.
So, basically, what we're asking for is when they do the repair, we have corrosion issues on the box. So, while they are, they are doing that, it makes sense to get the corrosion issues taken care of.
And I'm asking, that's not a warranty issue. This is...
No, unfortunately, it's a 36,000 mile...
Of course it is, right?
Yeah, oh yeah. And we have 117,000 miles on it, so... So, that's what we're asking for on that, while they have there, just to get it all done, be done with it.
And we've used this company before?
Yes, we have. In the past, we had, when we sent our engine one and the ladder truck out for refurbishment, I believe, 2011, 2010, we put it out to bid. No one would touch it because of the size of the trucks and the aluminum. They kind of stay away from that. They don't want to get involved in it. So, other towns, I've got in the pamphlet that have used Forest Auto Boy, their A1.
Alright. And it was my only, and it was answered the same way. My only thing was it was just one, we only had one quote. I think it was explained.
Any action?
Make a motion. We accept?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, to adopt resolve 2019-34 to use reserve funds to repair corrosion issues on engine one and truck one in the fire department in the amount of $4,294. That just straightforward? That's...
Pretty straightforward. Yep. It's, there's a few spots on each truck, and we'd like to get them fixed now. They're not going to get better. Over time, they're going to get worse. So, what it is, it's electrolysis with aluminum. And you go down the roads with the salt and stuff it. And then you rinse them off, back them into a heated garage. And everyone has the problem. So, it's not unique to us. All the departments have the same issues, so.
Oh, yeah, motion to approve. Second. First and second. Anything else from the public, council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10, resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. I don't see anything there. Oh, there is one thing there. Town clerk resignation, April 4, 2019. Susan.
Kathy has been talking about this from some time and has made the decision that her last day of employment with Bucksport will be April 4th of 2019. She's leaving huge shoes to fill that will take longer than three months. But I, we have to start somewhere. And not only do we have to replace the town clerk, we have to address the cleaning issue because Kathy also cleans this building and does that job, along with 100 other things that are on a big book in my office that I'm trying to write a job description from. But she's a treasure, and she's, in many cases, I think, looking back, been the glue that's kept the organization moving forward. And I hate that I'm the town manager that she resigns on. But she assures me that it's related to her own desire to have a life beyond working 60 hours a week for the town of Bucksport, so.
Well, that's ridiculous if she wants to have a life.
I know. But, anyway, the, we're working on a job description. It will be advertised. It's really important that we get someone who has experience as a clerk. The elections process these days is so complicated. It's a learning curve and a half. So, we're, you'll see within the next couple of weeks, ads go out. It's going to be an extended process. And the goal is to hopefully have someone that will be able to come on board before Kathy leaves so that we can have a transition that one knows for the other. So...
Is there any, any need or desire or willingness... Is there any need or desire or willingness to do, come back for the election or help out the election in a consulting role? I'm sort of serious about if it's that complex.
She's not going to do this and run. I'm not going to just walk away. I could never do that for this community. I love this community. I grew up here. I will help them anyway after.
Thank you. So you just have to accept that.
Motion to accept with regret. Have a motion and a second to accept regulation, town clerk. Anything from the public? Further from the council? We're going to miss you. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, approval of quick claims, discharges, and deeds. Item A, Troy Sheehan, map 52, lot 20, 2009 and 2010 tax leads. How the council like to approve? How the council like to go? Approve. Motion to second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, Ruth M. Bennett, map six, lot 52, 2017 tax lead.
Motion approved.
Motion to second. All those in favor? Item passes. Item C, Ayers of Sally G. Eastman, map seven, lot four, 2017 tax lead.
Motion approved.
Motion to second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Item D, Ayers of Sally G. Eastman, map 11, lot 20, 2017 tax lead.
Motion approved.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Item E, Sandra R. Smith, map 13, lot 65, 2016 tax lead.
Motion approved.
Motion to second. All those in favor? All those in favor? Approve. And item F, Terriam Hutchins, map 33, lot 38, 1998, tax lead correction. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? The motion passes. Item 12, department head reports. There are reports in the packet for the council from all the department heads, so we have a management report.
Our community economic development director, Rich Rotella, and I were interviewed for a feature that will be aired on Channel Two in late February in regard to former mill communities, which will be more positive press for Bucksport. It was a great interview for us. The first meeting of the Adapt Implementation Committee was held on Wednesday, January 9th, and it was a well-attended meeting and spent reviewing and discussing the priority items that have been identified in the plan. Paul Oceans has filed a formal response to the appeal that was filed in regard to their wastewater treatment license from the DEP, and further information on this process should be available by the end of January. Interviews were conducted for a new senior center director. There were three very qualified candidates, and I conducted interviews, which included the Board of Directors of the Senior Citizens Group, and we selected William Foster of Bucksport as the next director. He will spend a few days now working with Sway and Craig, and will be starting the position in full the first week in February. Chief Bowden, our fire chief, is on medical leave, recovering from open-heart surgery, performed in mid-December. He's doing well and appreciates the good wishes that he has received from many community members. And finally, thanks to those who participated in this year's decorating contest, and congratulations to First Friends Daycare on Route 46 for the first prize and the local variety.
Set public hearings, hold public hearings, and approve any licenses or permits. We have one permit, a CMP pole permit through 15 Town Farm Road. That doesn't need a hearing or anything, does it Kathy? That's just a signature for the pole permit?
It's just a vote to approve it, not the signatures.
Any questions? Is there entertainment in motion?
Motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the pole permit. Any further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Discussion items not on the agenda for council and public. We'll start again with the public. Anybody have any discussion items that we haven't talked about already? Yes. When you come up, you can add your name and where you're from, please.
April McCarlin, and I'm from Bucksport. I am part of the community action group, working on one of the items from the Heart and Soul Initiatives, and that is the single-use plastic bags. We are just letting you know that we're still working on it. We're in process of canvassing local businesses and gathering information, how they feel about the stopping the use of plastic bags. We're also organizing some education. We're looking into some films and some alternatives to plastic bags, some reusable bags, and some bags that are made from resin that are compostable. We're also connecting with other communities that have moved forward on this issue already and getting some information on easier ways and how to go about it. So that's it.
Great, thank you.
I have a follow-up. We presented you with somebody, oh, Charlotte Bridges, Bucksport, Town Farm Road. We presented you with a new face, and now you have an old face, old face in a couple of ways. I just wanted to present you with one of our education thrusts. We've been experimenting with a variety of bags, both from recycled materials and new materials, with the idea of not only doing education, but trying to get a cottage industry going, where we would sell the bags in town from businesses and maybe various events. So just for the fun of it, I thought I'd show you a couple of things. This was recycled from the cat food. This one was recycled from the dog food. Very sturdy bags, easy to do if you even have any ability to sew it all. And then I've made a lot of different bags, which I've given as gifts. Some of them are plain, made from denims, again, very sturdy, and some of them fancier. And I've done a lot of different things. And what I've been trying to experiment with now is something that can be kept in a pocket and that you can pull out real quickly. But anyway, that's just to update you that we have been working on it, even though we haven't reported it for a while. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
How do you feel about being the community bag lady?
I say I'm the baggy lady.
Really? Mr. Rotella.
Yes, Rich Rotella, Community and Economic Development. I was the third person in the yards of the bags. I wanted to let the council and the public know that the Bucksport Area Veterans Memorial has been selected for the third time since I've been here to be the recipient of the Hennifer Helps reusable bag program for the month of February 2019. So from the 1st to the 28th, if you purchase the community bag, $1 of that comes back to the Veterans Memorial. And Rich Rotella, 32 Woodland Heights, Bucksport, Bane, would like to have the council consider setting up an ordinance committee meeting for Chapter One, General Provisions, last updated March 19, 1978. Please consider changing the county of Bucksport from Penobscot County to Hancock County. Please. Thank you.
We do have a committee, that committee coming up next meeting, so we'll make sure that's on the agenda.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Yes.
Nancy Minet, Bucksport. This might have been mentioned, I'm not sure if you've had a meeting since the New Year, but we know there are so many people in Bucksport that just give of their time and talents to bring community together and create this great community we live in. And I just want to publicly thank Colleen and Mike Gross on New Year's Eve for organizing a community gathering in the first floor downstairs of the Chamber Building. They had lights, they had brought fire pits to cook marshmallows. The fire department came with their ladder to drop the ball. They had music organized, and I think it's just a great example of community spirit and volunteering of times. So I want to thank them.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Jim Morrison, here we down. We're at a point right now where we can make a decision on what we want to do with our solid waste, I believe. I was wondering if anything had been discussed or thought about that situation as it is. Perk is ready to take trash at $75 a ton at the gate, and Five Wives not ready yet.
Anybody else? Anybody from the council? Open discussion.
Just, we had, I want to let people know, we had another meet, second meeting, actually, that formalized Bucksport Next, groups of groups the other night, trying to keep that going, making a little more progress, I think, each meeting, since we reorganized into Bucksport Next, and hopefully it'll pay dividends down the road. I think out of that meeting, we had at least a couple instances where people were able to communicate resource needs or issues or events that they could work together on. So hopefully that'll keep the momentum going, and our next meeting is in April.
Anybody else? I just want to say, you know, looking forward to 2019 here in Bucksport, I think it's chances to have some great things happening here. There's a lot of positive things that are going to happen. I think we're poised to go to the places we hoped that we were going to go to and get to. So looking forward to where we're going to be a year from now, talking about this and see where we're at, and hope I'm not all wet in the face, and Larry's got Wilson Hall taking care of it. We're good to go. The other thing I did have, and Jim brought up, and I thought about this, because I, when we had to vote on Perk, I voted to stay with Perk. I know that when the January 1st rolled around, if they weren't ready, we did have the option. Am I correct in that, or?
The MRC didn't exercise that option. The contract stays the same. Bucksport is currently paying $70 a ton for its solid waste disposal. It is scheduled to begin delivering its waste to Fiberite April 1st. Jay Lamper and another person from Public Works attended a meeting, and Bucksport is in the first round of communities that is supposed to begin hauling to that, although the waste has not gone to Fiberite, the town has not expended more monies than it was contractually obligated to for the disposal of trash, which was the $70 a ton, and the additional transport cost is reimbursed at the rate of $110 an hour. So the April 1st deadline is the, what I have told the MRC is that the April 1st deadline is the April 1st deadline, and that should that one not be met, the town of Bucksport would be having a conversation about doing something different because that's our drop dead date, shall we say.
Yeah, I think we've all talked about, you know, we don't want stuff going to landfills, and that's where, and I think at that April 1st date, we really, you know, that's where we're at.
Well, April 1st is the date when that transition is supposed to happen in terms of our trash going to its designated home. And that, beyond that, expending legal fees to fight that rate this minute for the next couple of months wouldn't make a lot of sense.
Are we being impacted by the price changes in the zero-source recycling?
Well, the zero-source is costing us more than trash, and it's costing us more than trash because there's not a recyclables market. However, and a number of communities have made a decision to stop recycling and just throw it all in the trash, and to save money. And I haven't come to you and recommended that, even though that expense is higher because the community spent a lot of time talking to people about how important it was to recycle and going through the exercise of becoming a zero-source community and doing those kind of things. And state law still says that communities are supposed to be at a certain percentage for recycling by 2022. So I'm not sure how the communities who have backed off from any recycling are handling that, but the expense isn't so exorbitant that it's going to cause us to overrun the budget, and I think it would be a poor message to send to people if we said, we were kidding. Recycling really isn't that important because it costs us a few more dollars to do that right now. There are also, as a result of what's happened with the closing of markets overseas, the development of more recycling options within this country that are currently being worked on, and I think within the next year or so will happen. And the Fiberite process also takes more out of the waste. It's a higher recycling rate than what we have now. So that is where that stands, and I haven't made the recommendation that we just throw it all in the trash because it's cheaper, because I don't think that's the message. And actually, I've had a number of people, I've received a number of emails from people saying, where is your recycling going? Did you stop recycling? And from people in the community who expressed support for the town to continue its recycling programs, even though other communities were not doing that.
Thank you. All right. Item 15, upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignment, scheduling committee meetings. I know we have one regulatory review committee for truck weight limits on local roads. We'll get rid of Penobscot County. I think we'll put that on the agenda for the regulatory review. Again, like I asked, put in what committees you want to serve on. We'll set those committees before that meeting, let everybody know, but we'll schedule it for 6:00 or 6:30? Is that the only thing on there? Is that the only committee meeting we have, do you think?
Regulatory review. The referral of Appendix K, does Appendix K have to go to the committee before it goes to?
That's coming right to a first reading, right?
That's just going straight to the council?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would think that, well, the truck weight limit filled the room last time.
Yeah, it did. We say 6:00.
6:00.
Yeah. And that way, we can make sure we get Penobscot County out of there. And I think that's the only thing we have. Like I said, we'll make the assignments and let the folks know that are on that committee. We'll go from there. Nothing else. Item 16, adjournment. Make a motion. Second. All those in favor? Adjournment.